Thank you. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
Present Counsel Cahill.
Present.
Present Counsel Capano.
Present.
Present Counsel Calucci.
Present.
Present Counsel Creighton.
Present.
Present Counsel Seh.
Present.
Present Counsel Floyd.
Present.
Present Counsel Lozey. Present Counsel Net.
Present.
Present Counsel Phelan.
Present.
Present Counsel Trahan.
Present.
Present, eleven. Present.
Can we all please rise for a moment's silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
We have one, sorry, one communication from the owner of the mayor. Dear Counselors, I'm hereby pointing Mr. Warren McCully, 174 Tracy Avenue, to the Lind Cable Access Media Board of Directors. Mr. McCully's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 11, 2016. Sincerely, Judith Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
Motion to approve. Motion made. Seconded in discussion. All those in favor, opposed. Motion carries.
A public hearing is off on the ordinance amending his own ordinance of the City of Lynn. No public hearing to be held at the planning board table near rapture.
Counselor Seh.
If motion is sent back to the ordinance committee.
Counselor, I can add, motion made. Seconded in discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Next petition, petition of 26 Autobody, Edward Gutierrez for permission for an Autobody shop at 52 Oakville Street with hours of operation, 8:00 a.m. until 5:30 p.m.
They go over the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Mr. Manino, if you could just come up to him. Oh, thank you.
We do one at a time.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing us this evening. Nick Manino from Manino Construction and Property owner of Oakville Street. I'm here with Edward Gutierrez from 26 Autobody. Edward currently is, has run a business on Weston Avenue and was looking to expand his business. We have a property at 52 Oakville Street that right now doesn't fit our, it's a standalone building that's separated from our main facility and it's not conducive to us expanding into. We did some research with Edward and we feel that the property that he has, he kept it nice and neat, we felt he was a good fit for our area. We've been on Oakville, sort of been in West Lynn for almost 75 years and we've been on Oakville Street for 36 years now. And I think you can count complaints that we've had, on one hand, it's a turkey street with heavy industrial on one side, residential on the other side. We've always been respectful to our residential neighbors on the opposite side of the street and with 26 Autobody, we will make no exception to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. Francis Martinez, Executive Director of the North Shore Latino Business Association. Edward Gutierrez is a member of the North Shore Latino Business Association and we are representing our membership swatting in his favor. He is a very respected young man who showed, based on all the information that we have, very responsible with his business and just about well for any person. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Capano.
Yes, I've been with the owner of the business, Mr. Gutierrez. He seems like a really good young business owner and Mr. Manino is very respected and very responsive, as he said, there's no doubt about that. But there is, there are some concerns that the neighbors have that haven't been resolved yet, so the owners have agreed to have a meeting with the neighbors in the next couple of weeks. And so I'd like to make a motion to table and have a meeting first and then come back.
Make a motion to table. Not debatable. Seconded. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Next petition, petition of National Grid, Jason Dwyer, for permission to install approximately 30 feet of 6' 4" PVC conduit encased in concrete from an existing manhole, the intersection of Liberty Street and Sutton Street in the southerly direction. Also installing 45 feet of PVC conduit encased in concrete from 41 Sutton Street in the east south direction across from Liberty Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, good evening. John J. House from National Grid. I address 170 Menwood Street in Weldon, Mass. A new business started at 41 Sutton Street and provide service to that. And application, would like to upgrade some of the facilities in that area. And an application would like to install conduit from existing manhole to parking lot in that area. And also would like to install conduit in the street to 41 Sutton Street and provide service to that.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton. Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten. Yes. Next public hearing, petition of Comcast, Timothy Browder, for permission to intercept existing conduit on King Street and place manhole slash vault, place one 3" PVC conduit 15 feet plus or minus in the north easterly direction to property at 74 Ocean Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. Timothy Browder with Comcast, 55 Comcast Street in North Welling, favor the petition.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Seh.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Absent Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, ten. Yes. Next petition, petition of National Grid, Jason Dwyer, to install two 4" conduits encased in concrete approximately 120 feet in a north easterly direction from existing P-27 Sagamow Street to existing manhole number two Sagamow Street in order to remove faulty UG switches in manhole number two Suffolk Street feeding half aloft apartments at 678 Washington Street and reap them from new overhead fuses at P-27 Sagamow Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Hi, John J. House from 170 Menwood Street in Weldon, Mass. Would like to refeed service to 678 Washington Street. There's some underground switches that are faulty. Would like to refeed it from the overhead and be obviously increased to be lightable.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, due to the members, I'd like a motion to approve this. I would just like to ask the National Grid, keep in mind the businesses and residents in the area. Last year we had a number of issues that resulted from similar work with equipment being left overnight as well as construction taking place during the evening when people were trying to sleep. So I'd ask you just to abide, find a special permit. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Counsel Cahill.
Mr. President, just curious with our laws and the elderly housing we have there in the summer months, are there going to be any breaks in services? Would you mind so? Did you hear the question?
Yes, I did. There will probably be one or just to swap over to the fee. Probably during the day and obviously there's a lot of elderly people in that location probably doing that and not have a hot day afterwards.
And how long would that last?
Probably maybe 46 hours.
Four to six hours?
Possibly.
So how do you determine whether or not it's a hot day or what's your approach?
You think about, you know, next week it's going to be hot that day, you know, just think a lot of heat.
What about oxygen machines?
I mean, obviously they probably have a generator as soon. I mean, I think if you want power, if you have cable things like that, they must have a secondary source.
Counsel Cahill, I mean, I would venture to guess that Counsel Creighton would be acceptable with friendly amendment that prior red notification be required to the neighbors you're concerned with.
Absolutely, if Counsel Creighton would be available with that.
They'll put that in the form of an amendment. Counsel Cahill, seconded by Counsel Creighton. Discussion on the amendment. Roll call on the amendment only?
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes.
Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Next, I'm sorry. Next petition, petition of Rights Vice Caribbean, Noyan Edwin, for permission for a sign permit at 532 Weston Avenue.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to speak into the mic so you can hear me. I didn't hear one thing since I've been here. It's no big deal. We just installed a sign at this new location on Weston Avenue and now they would like to put an awning up over their front door. Hello?
Who's listening?
Okay, you want to be the saint?
Please.
Could you state your name?
God bless America!
Sir, could you just state your name for the record?
Earl Allen.
Okay, do you have anything else to state on this issue?
No.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open up the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, due to the members, I've had a chance to speak with the petitioner prior to this sign being for us. It's a good new sign. It seems like it's a good restaurant. I have a motion to approve.
Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Petition of Fiesta Italiana Carnival at Holy Family, Reverend Gregory Mercurio, for permission for a festival slash annual carnival at 26 Bessemer Street on August 8th, 9th, and 10th, 2013, Thursday and Friday, 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, 2:00 to 11:00.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing nobody wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody wishing to sing in opposition? Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Seh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Petition at Caribe Restaurant, Salsa, Acrostic, for a sign permit at 61 Franklin Street.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening. My name is George. Company name is Francis Signs and Arms. I'm a major, you know, within speaking with the community around there. They've got ideas to have a restaurant between the area. There's no restaurant around there, so just go for the community, let them to just step up the house and go.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton.
Mr. President, due to the members, I'd like to make a motion to approve. I've known the petition for a number of years and I wish him the best of luck.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Petition, Ernie's Harvest Time, Ernie Frantangelo, for permission to operate a retail food store selling meat products and dairy at 597 Essex Street with hours of operation Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., closed Sunday.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
My name is Ernie Frantangelo. Ernie's Harvest Time. Looking to relocate on Essex Street. Bring the store pretty much the way we had it on Boston Street. Little addition of some floors, different floors and stuff like that. I think our record speaks for itself as far as where we've done. Been in this, five of these businesses in the city 64 years.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, President. Ernie's Harvest Time has been a long time. Chamber member of the linear Chamber of Commerce. They've always had an excellent reputation and we would love to see this approved. It's a very, very important continue in our business in the city. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
From 2016 Churchill Place. I've been a customer of Ernie's probably over 40 years and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to the downtown. Those of us that have sat in many meetings about revitalizing our downtown area, we have a business that's an established business. We've been struggling since they closed and I think it'll be a great addition to downtown.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Are there people here that are in favor of this that don't want to speak? Show of hands. Thank you. Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody in opposition? Seeing no one wishing to speak in opposition. Close the public hearing for all those in opposition. Close the public hearing. Counsel Creighton.
President, due to the members, we've had a chance to work with Ernie over the past month or so. We've met residents. He's given us plenty of time and really all the explanation I think everyone would need to be in favor of this. Long time in the business, great for the downtown. I do a few stipulations that I'd look like to add, but he's agreed to. Number one, the dumpsters shall be kept within a security lock fence. Number two, we announced that he installed security cameras, which he had in his former store. Number three, no meat or chicken would be put in the dumpsters. He currently freezes that. It just, as an effort to give away any rodents. And number five, we'd ask to evade efforts to minimize any noise resulting from rooftop generators. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Before I call roll call, if you could indulge me from the chair, I would like to point out, Ernie's Harvest Time was a successful business up on Boston Street and he was fortunate to sell his business. A lot of people who do sell their business typically go off into the sunset and enjoy their years of hard work. Mr. Frantangelo is not only not doing that, but he's investing back in the City of Lynn and investing in the community. And I think we're fortunate to have people like him in the City of Lynn. So roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Creighton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Floyd.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, eleven. Yes. Petition of Sweet D's Food Cart, Desiree Di Vicilio, for permission to operate a food cart on the sidewalks of Magnolia Avenue, Flax Pond Playground, for fundraising for North Shore Community College's Wellness and Healing Arts Program, Thursday through Sunday, noon to dusk, summer vacation, June 20th to September 1st, weather permitted.
Open the public hearing for anybody wishing to speak in favor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Officer Di Vicilio. Sweet D's Food Cart is a little pushcart line that I would like to operate upon Flax Pond Playground with a Chestnut Street entrance. For some consideration, as some of the members of the public have decided not to petition to sell on Magnolia Ave out of respect for their wishes. What else? Fundraising for my school. I'm part of the Wellness and Healing Arts Program. I'm very proud of that. And I just want to assure everyone that I bring my own rubbish and recycle bins for any of the refuse that would be a part of the thing card. That's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor?
I'm John Andrews. I'm with the Toff Carter Road and I'm also part of the Flax Pond Association and hardly committed. I had reservations when I originally heard of this. The young lady approached me. I told her my reservations. My concerns was with the Magnolia Park area currently right now on the weekends that is utilized by the associations for the soccer and they are being paid to the city park association and they trash the place. So my concern was with her adding to the trash in that area and she respectfully declined to be in that area. As of being in 12 Carter Road, I look over at the park and day in, day out, I see what's going on. A small pushcart respectfully asking permission, I think is a good testbed as opposed to the other two camping trucks that just showed up at our gates and started selling without getting permission from the council, which was sent packing. If we can determine the amount of, you know, she has already talked about keeping her own trash and placing her own area, we can possibly encourage small venues like this year to year. I'm not, I'm not looking for the onslaught of any of these vendors, especially the ice cream vendor which doesn't turn off his music and drives everybody in our community nuts, but I'd regress. But I think we can start with the pushcart, find out if this is going to generate trash. If it does, okay, then we know the next year is a no-no. So I'm not opposed and I am not acting for my organization, but I'm just saying that I am a person that sits on my porch every day and sees the whole park in front of me and I think that this could be a positive thing.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor? Anybody else in favor? Anybody in favor? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in favor. Close the public hearing for all those in favor. Open the public hearing for anybody in opposition.
Good evening. I'm Connie Bennett. I'm 1154 Magnolia Ave. I'm here to thank you guys for the opportunity to come tonight to speak on behalf of my community. It's come to our attention that Ms. Desiree Di Vicilio would like to oppose the Hot Dog Park and Magnolia Flax Pond areas Thursday through Sunday from noon to dusk. Just last week I spoke with Ms. Desiree. She visited my home and asked for me personally. I wasn't home, so when I got home, we didn't turn call to her to speak to her about it. She seems to be an articulate woman and she has an entrepreneurial spirit, which I relate to and I can appreciate as a community member. She can, she expressed her commitment to having this hot dog cart out in front of these areas where the parks are located because she wanted to supplement her income. My biggest concern is in the article that was given to the Magnolia neighborhood, she's saying that she's fundraising for the North Shore Community College Wellness and Healing Arts Program. My biggest concern is she fundraising or she supplementing her income. As many of the New City officials knows who I've been in touch with all week, we still have a residual problem with the Sunday soccer players at our park. They're continuously selling food, even though they were denied a permit a couple of years ago. They've trashed the assistant school parking lot. We do visit the Flax Pond Park and do see the trash and how it accumulates down there. Unfortunately, there isn't enough in our neighborhood. There's enough establishments in our neighborhood already that will accommodate anybody who's hungry, and it takes away from these establishments who have worked so hard to really build or pour with our community. It takes money out of their pockets, and nobody in the Flax Pond areas or the Magnolia Park areas will go hungry. So I would like to reiterate again to the council that that's our main concern alongside the fact that the Flax Pond Association has really worked so hard to kind of beautify this neighborhood again through cleanup programs and whatnot. The biggest opposition I have to this is that we did deny the vendors for the taco truck a couple of years ago, and it's important for our community, whether it's the Flax Pond side, the Flax Pond site, or the Magnolia Park site, to stand in solidarity and consistency and deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi. My name is Cyril Donio. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am the vice president of the Black Tomorrow Association, and I'm not a public speaker. I'm here tonight, not necessarily representing the Black Tomorrow Association, but a few weeks ago, we had a meeting, and we presented a letter and in favor of this cart, pushcart, whatever it may be. We were kind of like on the fence. We were not one way or the other on it. What we did have was a concern, and I thank everybody here. If you go down to the park, the association, along with DPW council, wherever it is, have done a tremendous job beautifying this place. But we do have a concern about increased trash down there. We have a hard time getting rid of trash right now. The place on a hot day is totally, there's a thousand kids out there. So if we have this cart down there, you know, I'm saying it's just going to increase, you know, more people down there, and then if you open up to one, you're going to have a half a dozen kids out there. The ice cream trucks on Magnolia, I take my grandkids there to the park afterwards, and there was almost a dissite between Frosty Truck the other day and a different ice cream truck. So as I speak personally for this cart, you know, I don't think it's really a good idea. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Evelyn Santiago, and I live at 36 Townesport. I'm actually right at the Denon Street of Townesport, practically in the Flax Pond. I am totally against having this cart come by, especially because we have enough trash out there, enough food being left around. I've been, I am the owner of the home there, and I occupy the home. And I've been there for 10 years now, and since they remodeled the park, we don't only get 10 or 15 kids. We have from 100 to 150 people from early rising morning till midnight, till 1:00 in the morning. All I hear is the ball bouncing around, trash all over the place. In this past year, we also have humongous rats out there. I've never seen rats up in that area until now. We have enough food from people going to Conduent's Farm, or from Wendy's, or McDonald's, or Burger King. Everybody comes and picnics right there, right where Magnolias are. The Splash Pond, I mean, I think what they did with the park was of great intention, but they didn't stop to realize that we, the residents there, are really having a hard time, especially myself, right in there. Lately, I've been having the police around. I have come to the city hall many times. I've spoken to Mr. Lozey plenty of times. He has returned my calls. They had mentioned to increase security there. They vandalized my pool. Okay, 10,000 gallons of water went into the park because they threw rocks and vandalized it, damaged my back fence. They, I had a call back because they broke into my shed. They stole tools and my pool heater. And then I called again for another. I have all the police reports, pictures, the side of the house, my fence not damaged. They pulled all the rocks and the foundation from the fence. This is all the kitchen people that hang around the park. I have all sorts of reports. Again, like I said, I have pictures. Mr. Lozey knows very well. I've called him many times. He returned my call. Everybody at the city hall knows me already by first name. The police officers, the security officer, Alexander. I don't know who else to cry out for help because everybody on that street and behind my home have been complaining. The back there, they use it as a bathroom. They throw their diapers and diapers there. The dogs, I mean, it's wonderful to see the kids having a great time, but it's horrible every time I go out there for a walk, when I can, I have to go out there and pick up cups from Conduent's Farm. I have to pick up broken glass from bottles. During the night, the smell of marijuana smoking right at the picnic area, right at those tables, right from my windowways, people making out in the park, late night. I mean, it's just, Mr. Lozey and everybody has told me, "Call Paul anytime after dawn." I call. I'm not going to bother the police department. They are busy enough trying to keep the city calm. You know, I'm not just that special person that they have to run to me, but something needs to be done. And honestly, about this cart that we're talking about, I don't think we really need any more food and trash being left there. DPW is constantly, was constantly picking up and cleaning up. I mean, there's days that it's just a horrible sight out there. Okay, the police officers, they have enough work to do. And I hope that, you know, this doesn't happen and that the word gets out there. I'm not only going to talk about myself being there at that corner, but for all of us residents there on Townesport and on Pond Street who have to deal with the amount of people coming there and all the trash that's left behind, the rats that we have to deal with, and we don't get to sleep well, I think, because of people being around in the park. So I want to thank you very much for listening and giving us, giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Mary Richard. I am the board of Flax Pond Association in resident of Carr Road. I have two reasons I'm opposed. If you are coming to the city of Lynn, we are fortunate enough now to have a jewel to look at, to look at, to look at the fountain and children playing at this Splash Pond. We, my second reason I'm opposed is we have nine, we are inundated with nine fast food restaurants that people can already walk to if they need something or bring with them. We do not need any more trash. And as the other neighbor was just suggesting too, the police have been hands full, and also our DPW, if they have to come around one or twice a week to collect the trash, or even clean up what's left behind, it's not acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Mackey. I reside at 8 Townesport. I want pretty much a couple of water. I myself go out there and pick up trash all the time. It doesn't know how many trash is left in the ground out there. There are people that have just put a ton of trash all over the place. They come down here with their cars, and they park the spot, and they park the spot, they block the street. They park the fire hydrant down there. I mean, I've been here for 10 years myself, and it's raining, and it's pretty much out of control right now. I'm like, I also said, "We don't want to call the cops all the time because there are more important things to do." And it will add to the trash. It will add to, you know, parking, and my wife's car, the kid down there, you know, the cars coming down there, no way to turn it on. I mean, it's a mess down there.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening. My name is Amanda. I also live in the town of Townesport. I agree with you, and I agree with Daniel. Also, it's ridiculous that every morning, actually, I let my dog in my backyard. I have to go, people are throwing the trash in my backyard, using, trying to use my bathroom, knocking on the door saying, "Can you do that? Can you use this? Can you come in your yard?" It's not fair of us, and I think that having somebody selling more food down there doesn't add more trash. I could take pictures of that, that somebody can even see the grass. You have all trash down there. It's not fair that we have to take after all these other people. We have our own family. We have our children. Why do we have to get there when that's like 10:00 p.m.?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Shenk. I'm part of the Flax Pond Association. I have a concern because allowing another vendor to come into the area, a vendor to come into the area, there's going to be more trash. There's going to be more food. We're trying to get a handle on the piece now in the trash. I usually take care of all the groups that are working on the ground. I work with them. I see the trash that's out there. If a vendor comes in now with some of the hot dogs, if they have the hot dogs, the other half of the food is put on. It's going to feed the geese, which we're trying to control at the present time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Shank. I live at 73 Leaview, Alabama, and I am part of the board of the Flax Pond Association. My concern is somewhat, as Mr. Shank stated, the pond ecosystem cannot handle the feces and the waste from the geese that is going into the water because the geese are being fed from the outside. They are not sustaining themselves on the food that's inside the pond to them or grass. I just see children love to feed geese. When adults go, "Hey, hot dog, you don't eat the whole bun. You feed it to the geese." It's a problem. I also have a major concern about the traffic. More cars coming to the area. Again, I also have a concern about the businesses in the area that are already there that sell fast food, and people can get their food from there. And I really think that this should be withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition?
My name is Brian Glossel. I'm the Townesport resident, and I'm just here to speak in opposition to this. I'm just echoing the sentiments of my neighbors, Evelyn and Dan Mackey, where trash and rats are definitely an issue, among other things, down there. And overall, I just don't think it's a good fit for that area over there. I don't see how the neighborhood itself benefits from this canteen truck, pushcart, or whatever it is. And on top of it, I really don't feel comfortable where we live on the backside of the park, where the basketball courts are, that I personally don't want a canteen truck or anything parked out vending food right outside of my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? Anybody else in opposition? Seeing no one else wishing to speak in opposition, close the public hearing. For all those in opposition, close the public hearing. Council Lozey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, we've heard quite a bit of testimony, and it's really not anything new. Unfortunately, the DPW is overwhelmed. Fortunately, the park has been fixed up, and it is a jewel of the park. The downside to that is there are a lot of people visiting that park. If it's a hot weekend or a holiday weekend, you can get hundreds of people that show up, and I'm inclined to deny this. However, I have spoken with the applicant, and she now realizes, unfortunately, the folly of a cart at this location or any location on the pond. I think down the road, we as a council need to look at whether or not we could maybe do an exclusionary type policy or permit where we could allow one cart location, but right now is not the time, and I don't want to belabor this. I want to thank everybody for coming out, and I hope, you know, we can move forward with a withdrawal of this application, and that would end this process. And I would ask that Matt Plark, if you could withhold whatever publicizing cost it may be, and this for her to withdraw. So I want to again thank everybody and Mr. President.
Okay, so do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to accept a withdrawal of this permit by the applicant.
Okay, and before, I'm going to entertain that, but I don't believe we have a written withdrawal, so if, I'm going to make a judgment from the chair. Mr. DiVigilio, if you could just state on the record that your intent is to withdraw the appeal, I can recognize this motion. If not, with this petition, we'll withdraw. No further comment, and I can recognize that motion.
I, David DiVigilio, wish to withdraw the petition and thank you all for your consideration and comments and concerns, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Lozey, motion to accept the withdrawal. Do you have a second? Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed?
We have two public hearings to be set down. I'll read them together. If you want to separate them, you may. Petition of Flannery's Handyman LLC Todd Flannery for permission for contractors yet slash warehouses at 19 Allerton Street with hours of operation, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. And petition of Societe Construction Micro Societe for permission to use property in 273 Essex Street as contractors yet Monday through Friday, 7:30 to 5:00 p.m.
So just set down the public hearings. Do I hear a second? Second discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton? Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes. Unfinished business, the ordinance committee report of May 28th to be adopted. There's two ordinances. I'll read them together. An ordinance amending the ordinance regulating public safety with inconvenience stores in the city of Lynn, and an ordinance amending the ordinance establishing a dog park in the city of Lynn and regulating the use of the dog park.
Council Sia.
Unanimous motion made for an admission to approve the second.
We're going to do one at a time. The first one, regulating public safety with convenience stores. Motion made. Seconded. Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes.
And also, you need to go.
unanimous motion approved.
Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes. Ways and Means Committee, there were two motion points to set down a public hearing regarding 41 Rawland Act. And the other, they requested emergency on the Broadway Route 129 reconstruction of roadway, including an order for permanent takings, order of taking of permanent takings, order for permanent easements, order of taking permanent easements, order for five temporary easements, and order of taking for five temporary easements.
Council Lozey, Ways and Means, unanimous decision of the committee, motion to approve the second.
And there was an emergency on one of the roads.
Okay, just no objection? We can take them both together? Any objection?
Nope.
Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes.
Now, the emergency on the Broadway issue on. Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes. Public Safety Committee, we have the following individual was appointed to council, Donald Turwitz, by Marion Street Model Head.
Council Barton?
unanimous motion made, motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion made. Seconded. To approve. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
License Committee?
Commanders go to the committee. Motion no second. Motion made. Seconded. To accept the report. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Public Property Committee, there's two motions to put two properties out to bid to a butters only with a stipulation of landscape, indoor parking only, and a motion to send a communication to Lynn Housing Authority regarding city-owned property at 29 Carr Street.
unanimous vote of public property. Motion made. Seconded. Any objection to taking them together? Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Sia?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Eleven, yes. Finance Committee, we have four finance transfers, and they're requests for emergencies. I can read them together. Certify, order that the city controller take the following action. Certify is an available fund the sum of $2,231,593 as awarded to the city of Lynn by the Transportation Bonneville, Chapter 291D of the Acts of 2013. Transfer the sum of $5,899 from excess workers' compensation account to workers' compensation employees' benefit account. Transfer the sum of $137,841.26 from the insurance plans account to the ISD maintenance contracts account. Transfer the sum of $30,000.01 from the ISD payroll account to the ISD outside professional technical account.
Council Palucci, the Met Court Committee. Seconded. Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Council Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
And on the emergency?
Council Barton?
Yes.
Council Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Council Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Council Palucci?
Yes.
Yes, Council Creighton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Seah?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ford?
Yes.
Yes, Council Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Council Net?
Yes.
Yes, Council Phelan?
Yes.
Yes, Council Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, eleven, yes.
New business. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor?